You're on muted.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, good.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Good afternoon. This is the Benzie County Board of Commissioners Study Session. Today is December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. We are in the Frank Walter House Board of Commissioner Room. Roll call, please. Cunningham?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Here.
Nye?
Here.
Roloff's?
Here.
Sauer?
Here.
Orsacki?
Here.
Holly?
There.
Please rise and join. Pledge allegiance.
What I was voting for.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. We have an agenda before us. Are there any additions?
Motion to approve.
And second. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign. And then we have minutes of eleven fourteen.
When everybody left on us.
Yeah.
I was never here to be answered.
You weren't there?
I was not.
Okay. I just wanna make one comment. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as presented. Uh, I was very proud of the way that distribution went on the opioid money, so congrats.
Very moved. Do we have support?
That wasn't.
Coming in. Okay. We have a motion and support to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Same sign. So moved. And this will bring us to our first public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And that will bring us to our continued discussion regarding adopting the resolution to start the Headley Reset Process for Benzie County and the townships. I think to date, we have four approvals and one or five. Lake? Lake, Crystal, Benzonea, Inland. What's the other one? I can't remember. No.
None of Garrett's.
Benzonea.
Benzonea, that was in there. Well then, no.
I haven't done yours.
Haven't done yours yet. So no, so four.
Maybe tonight. Maybe. I'd like to wait on it till we hear from the other ones. And I have Colfax tonight, so I'll try, or tomorrow night, so.
I have Homestead tomorrow night.
So I guess what I wanna hear from you, though, is do you wanna wait to hear from everybody, or are we gonna get most of them and move forward? I don't wanna sell this too far. If, you know, there's one lingering who's not gonna make an opinion, I don't wanna just sit and wait, and then it's, you know, we gotta have the ballot language next week.
How many are we expecting total?
What are you? It's all the township.
You got two, you know.
So.
Not Frankfurt, like villages or.
Cities are different based on their charters. So I guess, you know, what is the comfort level of this group? Is it fifty percent? Is it seventy-five percent? Is it, they wanna hear from seventy-five percent, or they want approval from seventy-five percent?
You need it by mid-January, or what?
So typically, the ballot language is due when for the August election, Tammy? Typically?
Oh.
May? For the August election?
I was, I think it is May.
I think it's May.
Yeah.
We do have time.
Like maybe.
But we also need to strategize and educate the communities, too, so I don't wanna, you know, approve it, and then the elections in two months, and then it was, you know, we just threw mud at the wall. I thought at the town hall, we made the statement that we were looking for a majority of townships to be on board. Okay. That to me is seven. It's right.
That's exactly.
I thought we said that by mid-January, too. We were hoping for that.
I've been telling people by February, so. I mean, I'm not gonna rush them into, if I rush them, it could be a no vote, where I could've gotten a yes vote. And, and quite frankly, I've heard you say August a couple of times, but I'm, I'm not convinced that August is the right date, even. It could be November. Which will obviously have a, you know, there's a lot to do, right? Got the taxation boards gotta be set up and things of that nature. But, um, I know for a fact that there may be, I maybe have one township that won't get back to me till February. Now, if they take till February, chances are there are no vote. So to your point, I guess I would offer this up. If we get fifty percent or more support, but they all haven't been turned in, well, we got the answer, and we can move forward.
Okay.
That's my opinion only.
Well, you said that also, though, about.
Yeah, but if we have fifty percent, that's not a majority, and that's what we said.
More, more, I mean, more.
But we can't, I mean, if we get six, that's not enough. I mean, unless we're saying that we're flexible on that, and I guess that's what we have to. That's why the discussion items on the agenda. That's.
Yeah, that's a majority.
Also is gonna be what townships, too, because some, some townships have unfortunately more say in this county than others by population.
And we didn't put that qualifier on it, but.
Just because the board is saying yes, it doesn't mean the constituents are the people that live in it.
Well.
It's a good measure, measurement.
That, that's what the popular vote is for, of course. Um, I'm just, because the townships have a vested interest in this also, that's why I thought that we should go to the townships first. And that's why I'm saying, as leaders in their community, they represent their community.
Sure.
Hopefully, they've gotten some feedback also, but I said fifty percent. I really misspoke myself. It has to be more than fifty percent already. Otherwise, I'm a no vote. And we may wanna look at a different approach, but.
How many do we have now?
Eleven townships.
Oh, eleven.
Then your info's wrong on the website.
Twelve in the city.
Twelve in the city.
Yeah, okay.
Almyra, Lake. Oh, Platte's not highlighted. So, I mean, six or seven-ish.
So we have how many now?
Four.
Four.
So why don't we all at our next, cuz we had January, right? So we all have meetings in January. Let's reiterate to our, our townships, we'd like to get these and, and revisit this, maybe our second meeting in January. And, and see where we're at, and.
And approach maybe the townships because we have a lot of good education need, you know, information to let them, just remind them that they can go to this link or whatever and get that information, just to help with the education part of it before you get the resolution or ask, you know, just make sure they're as informed as they can be.
And based on what we said at the town hall, it's gonna need to be seven on board. And I don't know how anybody else feels.
Majority, that's what we said in the public meeting.
I'm not backing off of that. Even though, you know, I, I can tell you from a financial perspective, there's consequences by not doing this.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm gonna do whatever the community wants.
Constituents want. Well, and I think if this, if the seven goal is met, you know, this very simply becomes an, an education. The facts are the facts. We we were where we were, we are where we are. It's up to the, you know, it's up to the voters. Um, if, if it passes, if it's approved, we find responsible ways to move forward. If it's not, we work with what we have. It's.
And even if it's approved, it could look different than we think it is today, based on input we've been given. And without getting into details, I've gotten some legitimate input about the bundling or eliminations of certain ones. I've gotten legitimate input from two townships now that, about the education piece of it.
Can you share any of what you're talking about?
Well, sure. I, there are certain special millages that I'm being encouraged to not touch because they, they feel it's more democratic to be able to vote on them individually. There's also a concern that, okay, you're educating my township, but you're educating my township board, and I'm explaining to them, if we have the green light, we know we have a lot of outreach we have to do. And that was part of our plan anyway, but we need to make sure we're communicating that, that we know that we've gotta hit various, uh, groups, schools, rotaries, township, uh, uh, hall, or town hall meetings. We got a lot of stuff we gotta do. It's not a slam dunk.
And we have four down and need three more.
Yeah, and I, I, there's one of my townships, I feel confident, they only meet once a quarter, so that ought to narrow it down, but, um, they've left me with the impression that, uh, they're gonna support it.
Okay.
But they only meet once a quarter. So they meet in January.
And what are your concerns about the timeline? Do you wanna speak to that? Do you?
Done.
So if we really, I, if we really wanna move forward with this and really hit this hard, I don't think it's gonna pass on the first time. I just have this bad feeling. Um, if we only approached in November, I won't support it until twenty twenty-six, and then you got, it's, I mean, you got another year and a half. And so, because like I've said numerous times, I won't take something to the voters on an off-year and pay for an election when I'm begging for money, essentially. That's not cool. Um, so I'd like to hit it in August and November. Uh, it gives us, it just is a higher advantage for us.
And I, you see, I'd be uncomfortable taking it back in Nov- let's say we do August, and I understand your reasoning for that, and I support it, by the way. I think it has to probably wait again, but, um, unless we have a different approach, a different story to tell, I'd be uncomfortable putting it back on a, the, the next ballot. I saw the school do that, and I was offended by it, and I don't wanna be doing that.
Well, and the other thing, too, is it, you know, we also talked about if Headley doesn't work, that we go for like a bundled public safety village. Well, if we do it in, um, November, we don't have an opportunity to even do that until twenty-six. And now we got the jail back up for renewal, we got SRO back up for renewal. You know, there is timing to this, and I hate to hold an election, renew all of these, and then the next election, we're saying, well, we're not gonna levy those, but can you pass this, too? And then it's that trust thing again of, well, now they have a public safety village plus four other millages and, you know, so, okay, if we hit it in August, then that gives us the opportunity for a public safety village in November, too.
Well, I get that, but it would be a different spin, a different approach.
Yeah.
Which I'd be more comfortable with.
Yeah.
And you touched on something that, I don't know, maybe the rest of you are hearing, but it's, well, what says you can't still assess the millage?
Right.
And it's a special millage, and then they'll say to me diplomatically, well, you know, we trust you guys, but what happens if there's a new board?
Correct.
Those are all legitimate comments that I'm getting, that all I can say is, well, it's a legitimate comment.
Yeah.
You know?
So I would like to try to lean towards August if we're going to do it, cuz then we have an opportunity for something else in November, whether it's Headley again, whether it's a public safety bundle, whether it's whatever. If we just go to November, now it's twenty-six. I do think the February deadline, who at least know where township Stan, leaves a reasonable amount of time. Okay.
How are you gonna interpret no response?
I think it's a no.
It doesn't.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Treat it as a no?
Yeah.
I, in fact, last night at, uh, Almyra Township, they asked exactly that. Well, what if we just don't do anything? I said I gotta chalk it up as a no. Well, we didn't say no, but you didn't say yes either, so I gotta chalk it up as a no. Okay. Thank you.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah, February.
No, with the effect that if, uh, uh, municipality doesn't respond, it's a no.
Yes, I do agree with the no. How's that for clarity?
No?
I'd just say we go with the ones we get. If we get X amount of nos and X amount of yeses, and somebody doesn't respond, we don't count the resp- the no response in with the rest of them. Because let's say you have one that only meets, you said quarterly.
Yeah.
Well, if they're not prepared to make their decision in January, but they ultimately would be, I guess, why are we gonna count it as a no?
Yeah, but you're saying you wanna change what a ma- what a majority looks like, so you're all eight company.
And if, and if we don't get seven because somebody decided not to put in, I mean.
Okay.
How many townships do we have that only meets quarterly?
Just that one.
Just the one.
Guess I'll be seeing you there in the not-so-distant future.
Okay.
The March one.
March one.
They usually have that luncheon.
Oh, is that why you come?
They specifically asked me to give them a report for that, so.
Okay, just wanna clarify. Yeah, you'll see me in March also. That's their annual meeting.
So do we have a clear path? Yes, I will add it to the February meeting, um, for discussion and possible action for February, and then we'll go from there. Well, we could have an answer by January.
Right.
So I would say have it on the agenda for January, and we'll, we'll take the tally and see where we're at. I'll play it by ear, but I'll play in February at the latest, uh, for that.
That's a drop dead date.
Okay. Everybody feel good about that?
Okay.
All right, let's move on. Okay, let's have our discussion regarding affordable and missing middle housing in Benzie County and changes to pay in lieu of taxes law, and we have Yaro Brown with us. Hmm. Um, I, I did hand out the three handouts this morning, so you all have those, and then Yaro has a very nice presentation for you as well.
So I'm just gonna present some, you know, data and information, and then hopefully we can have a discussion, um, as I go along, but just wanted to, you know, get some things on, in this PowerPoint and resources, so you could click on them, you know, afterwards, too, if you wanna do more research. Um, so I think most of you know who I am with Housing North, um, but wanted to, um, also just sort of set that, set the context a little bit for our work and, and what we do and what we focus on. Um, so we focus on housing across the income spectrum, from those experiencing homelessness, you know, all the way up, uh, to a hundred and twenty percent, you know, market rate, knowing that we need a lot of housing in our region, and right now, we're in a situation with an extremely low vacancy rate. Uh, so people are unable to move within that housing space, uh, right now. So if you go to the next slide, uh, this is the slide that I like to show. I adopted this from Jim Tischler at the Land Bank, but one of the reasons Housing North exists is to focus on that sort of missing middle or attainable area, as well as work across the income spectrum, but to focus on where there is a gap in resources, uh, and funding to make sure that we do have housing across the income spectrum. Historically, there have been resources, um, and these tools, like the pilot, that were available for those, uh, making eighty percent of the area median income or less. Um, and we have, um, have had some success in twenty twenty-two. You might have seen our, our emails or information about the new housing tools that were passed in twenty twenty-two, and essentially, those open up, uh, some of these historic tools that were used and expanded tools to now be able to be used for housing projects that support up to a hundred and twenty percent of that area median income.
Excuse me, do you have a cheat sheet for the acronyms that you're using?
Yes, I can hand those out, but I'll say that, so LI-TEC on this stands for Low Income Housing Tax Credit. So those, um, are more, um, I would say denser, so more apartment complexes, so higher, like thirty units or more would, um, be eligible for a LI-TEC project, and just recently, those programs, we also had some success at the state level where you could see a LI-TEC project in your community in a different way than in the past. Um, but those were, you know, are historically very competitive and were hard for our rural communities to, to have access to those projects. Um, and then the other one, CDBG stands for Community Development Lot Grants or Home Funds, and so those are funding that's available through Mishta or the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. And, um, I should mention that while those acronyms still exist for a little while, um, as part of the statewide housing plan, we're gonna be moving, or they will be moving to more of an open application, um, as opposed to being under each of those programs. Um, and then what else did I miss up there? I think those were the two. So Community Development Lot Grants historically have been, um, used for rehab and revitalization, as well as housing projects. Um, and this slide is just so we have updated numbers. I think you might have seen them in, in your packet. I gave you the summary sheet. If you really want some fun, um, activity over the weekend, there's a six-hundred-page report, and I think three hundred pages, or, sorry, thirty pages just for Benzie County. Um, but this is, um, I wanted to just kind of show you the need across the entire ten counties. So the report showed that we need over thirty-one thousand units in our region over the next five years, uh, but that does include market rate units, and you can see the bulk of that need on that chart is Grand Traverse County goes way up. Uh, but there is a need in, in Benzie County as well, and in that report, it's broken down between homeownership, um, and rental units. Now, we don't wanna take those numbers as black and white. It's a guide. We do know that most of the people in our region prefer homeownership, um, ultimately, but we need, uh, rental units and housing that's at a price point that they can afford and al- in order to be able to get into homeownership someday. Uh, so the next few slides, um, I'm just gonna kind of explain a little bit about the highlights for Benzie County. I don't wanna bore you with the numbers, cuz I said there's a lot in there, but I think you know overall that, um, population and size of your county, but you need about eighteen hundred, sorry, fifteen hundred and eight units between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-seven in Benzie County. And the next slide shows a part of the reason why, um, this looked just generally at seasonal and recreational housing, and your county has the highest, uh, percentage of all the ten counties in Northwest Michigan for seasonal or not year-round residents. Um, and so the next slide, I also just wanted to show, because this, I think, is representative of what's happening in our region, so this is hard to read, but you can, um, go on our website and see it more detailed, but if you look at the number of red Xs on here, what this shows is a list of occupations, what people might make, and whether or not they can afford to rent or own based on affordability. So when we say affordability or affordable rate, we want that to be no more than thirty percent of what people are making. Um, so in Benzie County, if you are in those, uh, different occupations, it would be very difficult for you to find a place to own in your county. And that is true mostly across all of our counties, um, but just wanted to share that, that most of the, the year-round workforce is priced out in your region, in your county.
I don't have very many green check marks, guys.
Very few green check marks. Um, the next slide, um, really is, is, this is also pretty remarkable. So if you didn't know, our region is aging, and especially in, uh, Benzie County. So this looked at households instead of just individuals, and in your community, it is expected that you will lose a population, households in sixty-four below, and you will start to increase in sixty-five and above. So the, this is all information to think about and take into consideration when, um, you're looking at the housing needs in your community, and you are forecasted from this report, um, which was done in June. It came out in June, so a lot of the data was collected in, in February and March, um, that you're gonna have a slight decrease in your population in Benzie County. Um, we also have a really low vacancy rate, extremely low in our region, actually, and Benzie County is not unique, um, in that case. So at the time of the study, they found only twenty-four homes offered for sale in the entire county, and thirteen of those were priced at above four hundred thousand. So again, this was a snapshot in time when he did the study, and this is, um, for sale, and then the next slide, oh, that did include both, okay. So then that also showed that you have an extremely low vacancy rate in your multifamily units or rentals, and in the report, it looks at, um, non-traditional rentals, so duplex and ADU, things like that, um, which are, would be really hard to find in Benzie, and then it also looked at the multifamily units. Um, so the next slide is kind of just what this means overall and sort of how he comes up with his gap estimates. So this includes, uh, projects that were in the pipeline at the time the study was done. And so, um, it is looking at all kinds of things in the study, and his, his basically analysis says that in your community, you need about two hundred and fourteen rental units, um, and twelve hundred and ninety-four for-sale units. Now, again, it's not black and white. It doesn't mean you can only build two hundred and fourteen rental units or only that many for-sale. We do need a whole spectrum and variety, and of those, uh, for-sale, but just under a thousand are for those making a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. And in those charts, you can see when we refer to the income, on average, this is a household of four, but it does depend on your household size. So that's your Benzie County data. So why is that important? Um, the next slide is, is why I'm here. So today, we're gonna focus on the pilot or payment in lieu of taxes, which is a new tool that has been, um, is available to our region, um, and it has been since expanded. So historically, this tool, pilot or payment in lieu of taxes, was used for low-income housing tax credit projects, or projects like Sean at Homestretch, where he would get home funds or other funds that would require a pilot for those making eighty percent of the AMI or below, and it wouldn't come to the county. It would go through the, the local jurisdiction. This new tool, the pilot or payment in lieu of taxes, has been expanded for projects that are up to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income, or provide rents in that category. Um, so it's really exciting. It is a multifamily tool, and in our region, we have the first project that has been gone through this process. So, um, it needed to happen before November of this year for that, um, tool to be used in twenty twenty-four. Um, but now our counties have an opportunity to, to enact this tool and use it in, in twenty twenty-four, or projects that would be in twenty twenty-five. That makes sense. So there's a timing, uh, thing to this tool.
For frame of reference, Benzie's area median income is seventy-ish. What is it?
I think so. If you go back to the last slide, I, I should have it. So in the report, I should mention, he talks about income in two different ways, medium and household income, and then we talk about it as area median income. In this case, we're talking about area median income, which is a HUD number. Um, and if we go there, I think it would be, in this case, um, somewhere around like seventy-five-ish, I believe, but I'll get back to you with that exact number.
Awesome.
Um, but it would be in, you know, in between that sixty-six, too. Um, and again, it depends on family size, so when a developer or somebody comes to you with those rents, um, you know, it would really depend on the type of unit, single, duplex, I mean, sorry, single fam- like, uh, studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and their household size, to figure out kind of what those rents should ultimately be with the goal that they should be no more than thirty percent, um, of what they make. And that should include, uh, utilities, not internet, things like that, but utilities, as well as your, um, if it's a for-sale home, it should include your, your taxes, um, as well.
So a hundred and twenty percent of that is about eighty-nine?
Yes, about. Yeah. Um, so there are a bunch of tools. We're just focusing on the pilot today, but I, you know, I just wanted to make sure you knew that it was available. In the case of Traverse City, they did have a project come before them in October. There was, uh, two projects. A developer had a rehab project and a new one, and because they, they put in the pilot application, it kind of encouraged Traverse City to move forward. So to our knowledge, they're one of the first in our region to develop their own pilot ordinance. Once that happens, if you kind of go to the next slide, um, so this is just generally about the pilot. You can read the, the bill, and, and we can go into some of the details, but essentially, um, it's a, a percentage of the rents. Instead of paying what that actual tax bill would be, um, it's negotiating an agreement with the unit of government to pay a percentage of those rents. Some nonprofit developers ask for a zero percent pilot. In this case, um, it, it, it's recommended between about four to ten percent of that, that rental, um, income. So, um, it's new. People are still trying to wrap their heads around it. Um, in the case of Traverse City, once that, um, pilot was, uh, in front of the city, it enacted a forty-five-day window for the county to be able to, uh, take some action, and I'll go into that in a minute. Um, and so in that case, the county was not ready to create a pilot policy, and so they decided to take no action, so that, that pro- those two projects are moving forward, uh, without, uh, the county having a policy in place. But they are working on it, and so I would just encourage you guys, and we'll keep you up to date on it, but, um, there were some resolutions. I didn't wanna muddy the conversation, but they're basically gonna dive into it with their policy committee, um, and we'll be able to share that. But from our knowledge, it would be the first county in our region to develop a pilot ordinance with this new tool. Yeah, um. So there are a bunch of tools. We're just focusing on the pilot today, but I, you know, I just wanted to make sure you knew that it was available. In the case of Traverse City, they did have a project come before them in October. There was uh two projects. A developer had a rehab project and a new one. And because they they put in the pilot application, it kind of encouraged Traverse City to move forward. So to our knowledge, they're one of the first in our region to develop their own pilot ordinance. Once that happens, if you kind of go to the next slide. Um, so this is just generally about the pilot. You can read the the bill and and we can go into some of the details. But essentially, um it's a a percentage of the rents instead of paying what that actual tax about bill would be. Um, it's negotiating an agreement with the unit of government to pay a percentage of those rents. Some nonprofit developers ask for a zero percent pilot. In this case, um it it it's recommended between about four to ten percent of that that rental um income. So um it's new. People are still trying to wrap their heads around it. Um, in the case of Traverse City, once that um pilot was uh in front of the city, it enacted a forty-five day window for the county to be able to uh take some action. And I'll go into that in a minute. Um, and so in that case, the county was not ready to create a pilot policy, and so they decided to take no action. So that that pro- those two projects are moving forward uh without uh the county having a policy in place. But they are working on it, and so I would just encourage you guys. I will keep you up to date on it, but um there were some resolutions. I didn't want to muddy the conversation, but they're basically gonna dive into it with their policy committee. Um, and we'll be able to share that. But from our knowledge, it would be the first county in our region to develop a pilot ordinance with this new tool. So I'll pause there for a second. Um, this is an example that um can kind of help us wrap our heads around a pilot, keeping in mind that this would be different depending on the type of project in front of you. But essentially, in this case, you have a forty-two unit development. Half of those are gonna be priced um at the eighty to one hundred percent. That developer is gonna come to whatever that unit of government is, fill out an application, ask for a a payment pilot or a payment in lieu of taxes. And essentially, um on those units, those twenty-one units that are income restricted, they would have a lower tax payment on just those units. That makes sense.
For a certain period of time.
For a certain period of time, yes. So in this case, it's up to fifteen years um that you that um that tool is available. Um, and then if you go to the next slide, this explains um kind of what the options are for the county. And I'm gonna lean on um the administrator and I don't know if Shelley's here, but just to talk about what that means in your community. But essentially, when that forty-five day clock uh starts, you can do nothing. Uh, you can have your own policy and you can choose uh to capture, you know, some additional um taxes in there, or you can address a project on a case-by-case basis. So I wanted to just make sure you knew what your options were, uh knew about this tool, because we're hopeful that um there will be some, you know, projects in the region that would potentially, you know, use this tool to bring in more workforce housing development. And Katie, I don't know if you have anything to add about about this part, but
Not really. Um, we'll we'll bring it back forward to discuss which option you guys are leaning towards.
Daryl, maybe I can, first, this is before you today because I had asked that we put this on a future agenda. And I have done projects with Lyte- with low-income housing tax credits that included payment lieu of tax because that's the only way you qualify for these uh tax credits. Uh, it's a successful way to attract developers. Our challenge in Benzy County with respect to multifamily rentals is that our projects are just so small that a developer can make the decision, do I build two hundred and fifty units? Or do I build fifty? Well, it's easy. That's an easy decision. I'm going where I can build two hundred and fifty units. If we had a tool that's just recently been introduced, um that could potentially make it more attractive, I think that we could get some developers to make that commitment in our community. And in some cases, people say, well, I'm losing tax revenue. Well, I'm gonna give you an example. Gateway Village in Frankfurt, most of you, if not all of you, know that that's my project. That received a pilot from the city. And they didn't have to come to the county, as was pointed out. Um, we could have never done that project without it because there's not enough cash flow that goes through that to really support um the cost of maintaining that project. Because this deals with operating costs. But what's more important, as we told, because we had to resurrect the Brownfield Authority in Frankfurt that hadn't met for over a decade in order to get that to happen. And this was in two thousand ten that that we did this. But they said, well, we're gonna lose money from a tax base. Well, they were collecting, it was the old smokestack that used to be there, if you guys remember that. And they were collecting practically nothing on it anyway. And so I think that we got a four percent credit on that. And that's the only one, I think, in the community we have. Am I right? Um, but you're collecting more, the Frankforts collecting more in taxes in payment than they were in taxes. So they didn't really lose anything, and it made it more viable project.
It's kind of like what we talked about at length with the True North Project and the brownfield, you know, capture of that way. It's kind of that same concept where it's, you know, you're collecting ten dollars, the development is gonna allow you to collect a hundred dollars. But we're not gonna charge the hundred dollars. We're gonna charge fifty for so many years, and then later we'll get that hundred dollars. But we're still getting more, you know, revenue. But we're not getting the full extent because we want to incentivize a lower rent or lower cost.
In a lot of these projects, the pilots are granted for the length, the length of time is negotiated. Generally, it's tied to when the debt will be paid off.
Mm-hmm.
And it has to remain in low-income status or workforce status. Where, and we're only really talking about workforce here, right?
Well, it could be for lower, it could be. So someone could come to you in theory now for a project that's less than eight, you know, eighty percent or less. But it is, the tool was created to incentivize and open it up. But really, what the tool did, aside from what, you know, historically, is to allow any project in your community to come to you that might not be relying on a Mishta grant. So if they didn't want to use state or federal subsidy, but they wanted to try to bring in rents at a price point, you know, that met met the needs of your housing, it 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 just would have to be one-twenty percent of AMI or less. And they will have to income verify. It cannot be short-rent, short-term rental. So just by nature of using the tool, it protects against other things that the community, you know, might be concerned about.
And you, and the property owner gets audited on it to make sure that you're staying in compliance. And there's pretty severe penalties if you're not in compliance. So it's to the property owner's benefit to make sure that you do stay in that status. And we have talked about what can the county, what's the county's role in housing? I know for me personally, I don't want to own housing for the county. I don't want to build it. I don't want to be the developer even. Um, but this, this only became available when? Later part of this year, wasn't it?
So it was passed in December of two thousand twenty-two, and then it wasn't, you know, really available until two thousand twenty-three. So it's brand new.
So when I, when I learned that this was now available, I thought, this is something we at least have to discuss.
Yeah, and I'll just go through a couple. So these are just sort of some reasons why, and I think art, you you kind of spoke, you know, to a lot of that. I mean, really, what we are seeing in our region is uh there is nothing available across the income spectrum, but we're experiencing what's called a step-down effect. So the people who can afford the eighty to one-twenty or even market rate are stepping down into units that maybe they, you know, somebody that is making less could afford. And so it's is the more units we have in general across and with a variety of price points, the better. And specifically in that eighty to a hundred and twenty of the area median income where people are priced out, but there aren't any tools or resources to help help bu- build those units. Um, you know, I think the other other thing, so apologize for my typo. I'm I'm uh flying by the seat of my pants these days making the rounds. Um, but really trying to get flexibility, I guess, so that um if you're priced out of a uh another incomes restricted property, there is somewhere else that you can go. So if you're making sixty percent in that project, you know, you have to move, there will now be units available for you as you grow and, you know, grow your family, grow your income, other things. So I just wanted to put these in there, you know, to think about. This is really the first program that expands it, um and that, you know, it is really difficult and expensive, as you know, to build right now. So any way to incentivize and make that um an opportunity for a developer to invest in your community, um you will really see the the benefit.
Daryl, why don't you explain uh the uh rent controls that are in place also?
You mean as far as how it would work?
Because once these are granted, it's not like a landlord gets to charge whatever they want. Uh, can you want to explain that to the group?
Yeah, so essentially, they have to, depending on the type of unit and and the size of the family, they have to make sure that those units are available are affordable to that income range, and it can't exceed a hundred and twenty percent of the AMI. So they will have to report, you know, annually. Some developers may want to keep it as close to that, you know, high end as possible. But but some make use it to create a range of op- options. So really, they will have to report annually. They cannot, you know, once that they start to increase those rents, you know, it would get caught and they would have to then, you know, there would be some penalties. But it is regulated. It has to go through Treasury. Um, and that's why the timing of was critical for this year versus like next year. So uh in theory, you would see workforce housing in your community uh up to one-twenty percent of the AMI, so thirty percent of that, whatever's affordable to that family for fifteen years in your community. You can also extend pilots. So that's another thing that, you know, we can talk about later, but, you know, fifteen years um is a is a decent time. Some people, you know, wish it was longer. So there will be tools, you know, in place to say, does this make sense? Do we want to extend? You know, pilots. Um, but it is a multifamily development tool, so it's not necessarily gonna be for a single-family, you know, developer. I'm sorry.
So if you bring in, let's, uh, so the study that you showed said we need two hundred and fourteen rentals for four persons, so eight hundred people. You bring in eight hundred extra people that aren't paying the taxes, that's an extra burden on police, fire, EMS. Tax, but but a minuscule amount compared to.
Yes.
So who's, where does that money come from to pay for all those extra services?
My understanding is the that it goes first to those essential services. So they, uh depending on if it's in the city or the township. Um, you know, it would go, that percent would go first to those essential services. But there will be, and I don't have the numbers exactly for for your community, but that, you know, that is, um, it is a reduction in future taxes. But right now, essentially, you're not having um those taxes be paid at all, or there's no no con- contribution to your community. And art, you were gonna.
Yeah, you, I gotta wade into this. They're, they're paying a fee in lieu of tax.
Correct.
Which almost always is much greater than what the tax itself would be because you're paying a tax based on all your rents that you're collecting versus whatever's sitting there now, which is usually either a vacant lot or it's a building that's been there so long, it's gotta be torn down in order to develop it. So you are actually getting more money for public services, not less. Who does the, I get, yeah, no, because if you're okay, you're only getting X amount for this vacant property, but you put eight hundred people on it. It doesn't matter how much you get. You're not gonna bring in enough to pay for the services needed for police and fire EMS. But who do the fees go to? Well, the municipality. So in this case, it'd come back to the county.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and that's where you have some options, right? So so at the county, you could come up with a policy. Um, you know, to say, we we want to have, um, you know, some taxes captured to make sure we're made whole for X, Y, and Z reasons. So in the case of Grand Traverse County, you know, they chose not to take action on this first project because they really wanted to understand what and what they would want and what future projects would look like and put that that into their their ordinance.
And and this is long-term planning here. I'm sorry, you want to say something?
Sorry, I just, my question is about, I, we have data on how many units are needed. We have data on, you know, AMI, what the what the income level needs to be. Do the developers have access to data about this pool of um folks who need these? How many can be approved? For this, I think in the couple of projects that we've had, the idea was there's so many people waiting for these. But yet, when the brass, when it came down to getting the applications, there was a very small pool of people that could be approved for the formula that was needed, whether it a credit issues or so. Do do developers have access to that in our community to know on our project?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, hopefully, they would come in and they would be doing, yeah, yeah. They have access to the the same data you have. But I I can't, you know, speak to how they end up, um, you know, figuring out their capital stack and getting financing for that. But the hope is that if it goes up to one-twenty, that you will be able to find folks that can rent within that wider income, you know, range versus having it be capped at eighty percent, if that makes sense of the AMI. Um, and
My question is, where is eight hundred people gonna work?
That is, and I I mean, I'm, I I think that there, um, I don't, I can't answer that. And I don't necessarily know that there's gonna be eight hundred people, you know, in those units. It could be, it could be single.
Said twelve thousand housing units.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve, twelve hundred, yeah.
There's no interest.
Order of our population more.
Um, I can't really speak to where they're gonna work, but what I can tell you is there is a huge demand for people wanting to move and come to our region. Um, we are turning away talent and attraction uh daily, if not weekly. So um, I think the idea is, you know, you build it, they will come. And I think right now people are um underhoused, and so would be very excited to find a unit that they could move into.
In addition.
That would be affordable.
In addition to that, um, we have a very hard time trying to attract new businesses, other than ice cream shops, I guess.
What's wrong with ice cream shop?
That's another topic. But um I've had companies tell me that I personally have tried to recruit. They say, Art, you don't have the workforce. So these people would be the workforce that would accommodate that. Or potentially, they could be working in Manasty or Traverse City because they've got housing here, which means that they're a local consumer. They're consuming goods here. They're using local contractors. They're using the great, get the gas stations. They're using the grocery stores. There's lots of economic benefit uh to having these peoples be here. Especially in the eighty to a hundred and twenty uh bracket, like in Gateway, ours is under eighty, which is a killer. All right? Most of those people are on assistance of some kind. The people we're talking about, they're working.
And the other thing. So the whole address what you had said, Rhonda, um, you know, that was a homestretch project, and it had certain rules in place from the state and other funding sources. We could have a private developer come, and this is the only incentive that he's uh using other than private financing. And then there wouldn't necessarily be those extra hoops to qualify for folks into those homes. So Homestretch, there's this qualification process, and a lot of that was related to the type of funding they received. And, you know, the type of project they were pursuing, whereas we could give this incentive to just a private developer who doesn't have all those other rules that they're beholden to, and then it could feel a lot.
I think the only one that I'm referring to is a is a credit score. I mean, I I can't imagine anything that, and I mean, even Habitat for Humanity requires that. You know, a certain, a certain credit score, which is prohibitive to a certain percentage of folks who are looking for housing.
Yes, and and in this case, this this project probably, this type of project probably wouldn't be for them, but what it would do is open up units for those that have that credit score and and allow them to move into it. So um, and it is, you know, it's a tool a nonprofit developer could use and a for-profit developer. So I think that's the benefit is, of course, we want to encourage our nonprofit developers as much as possible, but they are at capacity. And so.
So this tool was developed in two thousand twenty-three, right, is when it started at beginning of the year?
Yes.
Um, do you know any of the success stories? Are those being shared of uh communities who have utilized this and it's been taken advantage of?
Uh, just what I mentioned. So Traverse City is the first one in our region. Up on the slide here, there's two other communities that adopted the ordinance. Um, the city of Jackson and the city of White Cloud. I'm sure there's others, but we are really at the beginning stage of using this tool in this new way. So the hope is we're bringing it around to other communities and that right now, um, it wouldn't be until two thousand twenty-five that somebody could use this tool. But the municipality needs to have an ordinance in place. So in this case, it would come to a township or a village first, and then it would come to you guys next. So we're just, you know, encouraging you to think about it and what um sort of, you know, policy you would want to have in place. Um, and then if you want to have me back, I can share the other tools as well.
I liken this to what we approved with the energy efficient kind of thing. I mean, we approved the policy, but each project needed to be individually approved. So we opened the door to possibilities, but the negotiation of the terms is left to be, to be determined.
Yeah.
And pilots have been used other places. Just, this is broadening the scope of the pilot. So it's, there is success stories from communities with the old style of pilot that we could talk about or bring up. This is just this more broadened pilot opportunity that's brand new. So like Traverse City, Art said Frankfurt, various locations have used pilots and they've been successful. They've just now broadened it to allow it to be used more.
I I've had three different projects. Each one of them got negotiated separately. Um, so do you always, and one of the things I would encourage us to look at is uh the quality of the developer owner. If you have somebody that has a history of being a bad property owner, uh, no, that's a no for me, because you want that property to look as good ten years from now as it looks when they first built it. So it's, you get a bite at the apple every single time it comes through. In some projects, they may say four percent makes sense. Some will say ten percent makes sense or anything in between that. But each one of those gets negotiated and they have to be able to justify it. And typically, how you're doing that, let me digress. Take the pressure off. We're looking for nothing today. Okay?
Yeah.
So with that said, um, one of the things that you look at is what we call the gap. So if my operating expenses are, make it easy, a dollar and my rents fully loaded with a tax burden might uh be a dollar ten, we would say, look, and I need relief of those taxes of X amount of dollars so that I can get to ninety cents rather than a dollar ten. So just because they make a request, there's got to be a financial um reasoning why we would do that, not just to enrich the developer.
Well, and you can, honestly, you can deny it too. When we were in Traverse City, we denied a few of them, a few requests and said, yeah, we don't, we don't like this. Tweak these things and we'll consider it again. So you have that opportunity to say, yeah, we don't like your proposal. We want this changed, and then maybe we'd accept it. It's a whole negotiation. So you don't have to take what they provide to you. You can go back and forth. So, you know, they may want ten and you're more in line with five and you settle on seven. So essentially, this is a better deal than a TIF because the tax increment, you're agreeing to accept the taxes you currently receive. And then that gap is used to buy down
Mm-hmm.
the cost to the, so you're, this is essentially a better deal because you can negotiate more revenue, albeit not what it perhaps would get if there weren't a pilot.
That's my understanding. How do you feel about this? It it her her description, is that a fair description?
It is. The conversation that you and Evan were having. Shelley, can you come up to the podium? Would you mind?
Talking about more people coming into the community and how are we going to support those services? That's a valid question. Um, your argument was you're bringing in more tax dollars, not enough for eight hundred new people. But let's also talk about the fact, we're not bringing eight hundred new people here when we, when we build housing for eight hundred people. We have five hundred that have been looking for a space to live and they're living in Manistee and Grand Traverse and Lelandau, wishing they could be where they wanted to be, but they can't because we don't have housing. Um, Crystal Mountain is one of the biggest employers in our community and they are importing them from Wexford and Manistee. Because we don't have employees in Benzie County to support their business. So if we had a place for other people to live, maybe those people wouldn't support this business. We've just been out of the housing building business for so long and people are still coming. And so we are way behind the curve on what we need in terms of inventory. And she, she said it several times. These people come here to this new development, that opens the place where the people were, and those people come to here and fill in that gap. It, everybody just kind of rearranges themselves in, in different situations that they may or may not have been. But that's a valid question. When you say, we're going to have eight hundred people live on this property where the smokestack used to be and the smokestack had, you know, half a dozen employees, but no people living there. And now they have all these folks living there. Who's, who's supporting that support structure?
And, and that, that kind of stresses the quality of the owner too. Because if the owner's just sticking anybody in there, I'll use myself as an example. The first year I made a huge mistake in Frankfurt because we were under so much pressure to fill it up to qualify for our tax credits that we let people in that were burdening the police department. And I was always in contact with the police department. I got smarter about it and over the next couple of years, we were able to get rid of the bad players, bring people in that weren't leveraging the police department as much. So, and, and by the way, eight hundred units, that isn't going to happen. Eight, eight hundred people, but I never believed these numbers, quite frankly, when they say twelve hundred homes over the course of the next two or three years.
Yeah, but that's for a ten county region.
No, she said that was for Benzie County.
Just all the parts and pieces.
I just, I've just never bought.
I also shared this with you guys a few weeks ago in your email. So you have this. And then I also shared the thirty page out of her six month.
The other thing I want to bring up too, to address this, um, you know, the police and fire and such, uh, and we'll look more into it. But downtown, what we did for, um, one of the pilots is we actually ended up with two agreements. We had the pilot agreement arrangement, which was based on the taxes. But then they also agreed to a municipal services agreement, which was a separate payment to help pay for the services that are a burden onto the community. So there's multiple ways to skin this. And that's how we did it down in Traverse City at one point, because the commissioners at that time were adamant against a project. But then when we tied in the municipal services agreement with the pilot, they approved the pilot. And then there was a separate payment specifically to support those services. So that is an opportunity to.
There's less people in the public services there now than there were ten years ago. There's less officers, there's less firefighters, but there's more people coming because of the program. So how do you protect those people? When there's not money to pay for it?
Well, it's just another negotiation strategy in the whole picture of it. If that's a concern, you can stab at that.
You're talking about the between four and ten percent? If you negotiated six going to the developer and four going to public safety?
Yeah, it's kind of like that. Kind of like that. It's municipal services.
You know, we're gonna, we're gonna receive a six percent payment from you, but an additional four percent payment to house the.
And that's how we did it downtown to get to, you know, to get to the yes, because we're always trying to get to yes. How do we get to yes?
But that, I had a different experience in Gaylord because we did arrange to pay a separate fee for public safety.
Yep.
So we got a four percent credit there and then we're paying, I believe it's an agreed upon dollar amount, not percentage, that goes only to public safety. Can't be used to the general fund.
And that's how it was for that.
Okay.
Yeah. So it could be a percentage or a dollar amount, but that's how we addressed that concern was this separate fee essentially.
Yarrow, are there, um, sample ordinances of what this would look like to put in place that, that the board could at least, you know, try and digest?
Yes.
Yeah, they're linked right in this slide. So the Traverse City and the, so the city level, the county one, we don't have yet. Uh, because they're working on it. So, but I think MAC.
Yeah, they are.
Um, Michigan Association of Counties. So as soon as we get it, I, the Traverse City had resolutions and, um, so we care those, but I, I didn't want to confuse them. I changed those. Um, but essentially, you know, those are, well, um, right, Grand Traverse.
And I believe we're a long ways off
Oh, yeah.
from trying to make a decision on this.
And we have a lot of.
Educate ourselves now.
And the glory of it is we, and the glory of it is we can take our time because of the timeline, you know? You can't, it's not until twenty twenty-five anyways that we could take advantage of it. So we kind of have this twenty twenty-four year to really wrap our heads around it and decide if this is what we want to do as a county. So there's not a rush, which is really nice. Um, but it's a tool. You're right. It's a tool.
I do have, can you designate areas within the county where it can be used? Or does it?
Not in, with this particular tool that I've heard of, but the other tools, yes. So the attainable housing and the residential facilities exemptions, that's what the city of Frankfurt is working on right now. And on their website, they have examples of, of those two, uh, districts that they have formed. The neighborhood enterprise zone is another one. Uh, this we're bringing to you because this is really where the county gets involved in the approval on the county level, but the, most of those would be designed at the municipal level. Um, and then come to you, you know, for whatever approvals. The last two, I didn't put it in here, but these are just some, uh, toolkits and information about zoning reform and best practices that I just, you know, wanted to make sure you were aware of that we're hoping communities will start to adopt. And then that, that will ultimately lead to the use of these tools. Um, so I just wanted you to have those. And then the last slide is just resources that we have at Housing North. Um, if you go on our website and go under housing tools, you can see all of the different tools and examples. And you mentioned brownfield TIF. So, um, I just wanted to mention that there is a new H TIF or, um, brownfield TIF for housing that is out there. So that is a different type of tool. We can talk about that another day, but we did just have our first county and community adopt that tool and that is Antrim County. So the village of Bel Air had a workforce housing project in front of them. The village and the township approved a, a brownfield plan and then it went to the county. And on Monday or Tuesday, I can't even remember, last week, uh, it was, it was approved, approved at the county level to do the first housing TIF for workforce housing. So if you do want to learn more about that or share that, we can.
That is different than the legislation that was proposed about giving, uh, for long-term rentals, the homestead exemption?
That is different. This is, um, using a brownfield plan. And we've been talking about, we were calling it like Land Bank two point O. We had some names. It's become official as of, I think, September. Um, so Mishda is handling that. There's a lot of information on their website and, um, you know, it's exciting, but it will take, you know, some time to, to adopt and to see if communities want that. So if you want to have another session or just information about that, I wanted to focus on the pilot today, but, uh, our region is leading it, I guess, is what I can say. And our region is becoming what we call housing ready and queued up to use these tools because the resources out there are very limited. Um, and as you know, it's pretty expensive to build. So, um, you know, we're here as a resource and, um, I thank you for your time. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to.
So I, I get our job as a commissioner, we're trying to bring in businesses and housing area, but how, how do you explain as a taxpayer to a taxpayer? Why are my taxes going for somebody else's house, right? Like nobody helped me buy my house. In fact, I worked two jobs and still do to this day, right? So how do you explain to the average citizen? We're going to use your tax dollars to buy houses for other people.
I would say, I mean, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but they're not your tax dollars for the developers, the person who's investing in that property, that property owner.
But ultimately, like, the, the resources for the sheriff's department, the fire department and everything else, that, that's tax dollars of the citizens that those sources are getting used up.
My understanding, and it's just, just my understanding right now, is that the essential services for both of these tools, uh, the effort, the goal is to make sure that those taxes go to those essential services. It might not be the full amount. But the property owner is still paying those taxes and it, they, there would be zero if nobody was improving it or, or doing anything on that property in some cases. So, um, I don't know if anybody else, if Shelley, you want to add to that, but it is not, um, it is not, you know, it's future tax revenue that is still paid by that property owner. It's just that those investment or those taxes are being, uh, reimbursed or given back to the property owner. In a TIF case and in a pilot, they're, they're just a percentage, you know, versus what that property bill is. So I think from my understanding, it's an investment in your community and the goal is to still have the essential services be, be covered or made as whole as possible. Um, and I think historically this tool was not available or we weren't in a different situation with our housing where it was more attainable for people that lived and worked here than even when I moved here twelve years ago. Um, so I think these tools are essential if we want to bring more, uh, continue to retain and increase our workforce. Um, or we're just going to continue to see, you know, vacant properties are not redeveloped. So I get it, it's uncomfortable, but I do, um, I guess I want to be clear that there are still taxes paid and they're still going to those essential services. It's just not as much um, as if it was, we're, you know, fully taxed without this tool.
Okay, thank you.
Evan, what I'm hearing is it's up to like this board or the other municipalities make sure that the revenue coming in from these properties do get dispersed correctly, covering the essential services like first responder and other utilities.
One question because I'm still confused anyway.
I am too, so don't worry.
So the negotiations are going to be between the townships, the county and the developer? Is that what we're looking at here? Is it a three-way or just the county?
Um, it starts at the municipal level. So wherever that project is, if it's in a village, it go, they negotiate the pilot with that unit of government. Once that gets approved, it, then it goes to the county. So.
Just us.
And then it's just, uh, the county.
We can renegotiate that or how's this that work?
Well, we have different taxes than the locals have. So the township has their, so they go to the township to negotiate their taxes and then they come to us to negotiate our levy.
What if they're in a village? Do they go to the village and then the township and then the county?
Yes. So you are kind of the last one, um, but that forty-five day clock starts when it is approved at the, I believe, the city.
Does Home Stretch do this or is this just all?
Yes, they did.
They did a pilot.
Yarrow, just for clarification, and maybe I'm wrong on this, okay?
Because there was no opportunity until now.
Sorry. But Gary, you, you negotiate with a city or village, all right, on their pilots. And then I've never seen a pilot given at a township level. The county, it would come to the county and the county would be giving a pilot on the county operating village only. We wouldn't be making any commitments for townships.
So the township is whole? They don't negotiate anything?
Yeah, no, I've never seen it.
It would only be if the, the project was in a township that did not have a municipality. So like where I live in Lelandau, that would probably happen because there's not a lot of incorporated.
I know Home Stretch wants to talk to Walden about that project with Crystal Mountain. I didn't know if that went any farther after that, but you're telling me possibly it could come to the county. If, if the township is looking to grant a pilot on their operating village, they do not have to come here. It's just their operating village. Yeah, because it only affects the, we, just as we can't grant a pilot for anybody else but the county's operating village. That's it. So you're not talking about all of the taxes are eliminated. You're talking about the county village is being negotiated for a pilot rather than whatever the assessment might normally be.
They would still pay the special millages, like the E and T, full resource officer, those millages, correct?
Those are all negotiable.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
All negotiable. Yeah. So I think that's what we're encouraging you to just sort of dive into. And we, I think you were asking about like the threshold for pilots and that's something Housing North or, you know, some of the partners in Benzie could help with. And, and I would say in your master plan, you know, too, we could use it as a guide to say, you know, where is the, the limit for growth, right? Or how many pilots could we give out before we were to reach, you know, an impact? And so those are things I can't answer right now, but we could help, you know, help you find out as you negotiate the pilot. Or, or, you know, think about coming up with a pilot ordinance. Um, the same for the, you know, brownfield TIF tool, you know, just thinking about, um, some goal, the goals for housing in your community and how you would address that tool at the county level.
And Rhonda, you asked if you could apply it just to certain areas. That's what they, at the federal level, they call that redlining, which is, uh, a no-go. They, they don't want you to, because you could potentially exclude a discrimination, do discriminating against people.
But how, you know, a pilot is a multifamily tool, so likely it would only come in in an area that had some existing infrastructure or, you know, the idea would be to encourage it where you want growth to happen. Um, if you got a pilot way out in the middle of, you know, nowhere that, you know, it might not, the numbers wouldn't work or, you know, yeah, so I guess. Exactly. So you might have that, but I think some of it, it's just going to be the developer and the numbers and the type of property that is going to be developable.
That's very informative. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions?
I'll bring this back at a future study session just to continue the conversation and see if there's, you know, is there an appetite at this level to implement an ordinance? Maybe there is, maybe there isn't. Uh, but we'll continue the conversation. And like I, we said, we have lots of time.
And, and to Yarrow's point, there's a lot of other tools. Quite frankly, I asked her not to get, got, not to get into those today.
Thank you.
Just complicated.
Like the land bank and the brownfield tools. If you put them in place and never use them, okay. But if you have an opportunity to use them and you don't have them in place, now you're behind the eight ball. So if you, if you think this through when you're not under pressure and, and put this in place, set it on the shelf.
Really good point.
Wait for people to come.
Have the toolbox.
Yeah. But if you, you don't have a hammer and you need one.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, we're going to move on then. Thank you. And our next conversation is a discussion regarding broadband, change in funding allocation and direction. Is Mitch Shapiro?
Uh, Mitch is on, um, but he had mouth surgery yesterday, so he will speak, but he doesn't want to have to carry the conversation. Um, so he will answer some questions, um, if needed.
Try and keep it limited, Mitch.
I'll, I'll just admit him if he's needed.
Okay.
Kind of thing. So in your packet, what you'll find is a memo from myself as well as, um, an outline from Mitch. So as you all know, Mitch Shapiro was contracted with the county to really be that consultant, such, subject matter expert, project manager for broadband. Cause as we all know, broadband has evolved from a square to a circle to a novel. It's, it's been a, a whirlwind for over a year now. And so Mitch and I have had a lot of dialogue going back and forth about, you know, what we feel is best for Benzie and best for these projects as we move forward into the future. Um, this board allocated two hundred thousand dollars, uh, set aside over the next couple of years for a project manager for the project. Mitch and I have had some frank conversations and quite frankly, Mitch says, I don't need that two hundred thousand dollars because I'm really good at these things, but there's other people who are good at other elements of the project that we're going to need. And so, um, what we talked about is having the board, you, uh, because you took the original action, is to offer some flexibility, ability to that funding, um, so that we can bring on these other subject matter experts as we move forward with this broadband project. As Tim talked about this morning, there's the BEAT grant that's coming down in the next few months, um, ideally, and that's going to have certain elements to it. We're, um, in the beginning stages of this digital task force that we've been working on with various folks around the county. There's, you know, different people that are needed for that element. And then there's still, you know, there's the Robin Grant to roll that out and those sorts of things. And so, um, what Mitch provided is kind of an outline of what we've done and kind of a projection of this is where we think we're going, um, which involves some of those other subject matter experts. So basically what I'm asking for you is to amend the motion that we took about a year ago to offer flexibility to that motion because that motion was very specific to a project manager. And Mitch has been very open to me of, I don't need all that money. Um, and so I would like it more flexible so that we can bring on those subject matter experts.
And, and about three or four months ago, the EDC, um, supported that. That some of those monies, if the commissioner approved it, they supported that money's being used for someone other than Mitch to have Mitch be able to help hire him out, hire them out, by saying that, right?
Yeah. So, you know, Mitch is, I'm not going to just go find these folks because I'm not in that realm. But Mitch, who is in that realm, is making those connections and ma, putting those connections in my path and really, you know, this person, this is where they come from, this is what they deal with and that they're, this is their strong suit and we need this for this. you know, this person, this is where they come from, this is what they deal with and that they're, this is their strong suit and we need this for this. Um, so he is providing that recommendation and that guidance um to me and the county as to who really would make sense to do some of these other things.
So is Mitch's position then a salaried position?
Just a contract and he bills us based on the hours that he works on Benzie County at the rate of $90 an hour.
And how much have we spent so far?
Knew you were going to ask. Um, so about $30,000.
And that's been for the full year?
Mm-hmm.
So.
And some of that has went to Grow Benzie, not a ton. Uh, but some of that had went to Grow Benzie because they were very important in um the Robin Grant and helping us obtain the different letters of support and those sorts of things. So some of that did go to them, but not much.
And that was a rate that uh Mitch negotiated with them.
Yeah. We were very lucky to have entered into agreement with somebody with so much integrity. I mean,
He does.
We allocated a, a large amount and for him to have used only that and to say, use it in other areas, it's admirable.
And I appreciate it very much. Billing us completely because he and I will spend time on the phone together and I'll bet you he's not billing us for that, so.
Mitch is very, very interested in the greater good of Benzie County. Um, Mitch is.
Fell us double.
That's what I just, right?
Got to talk to Art for two hours.
Mitch is very invested into Benzie and, you know, the state of Michigan as far as expanding broadband. And um he's, he's done very well by Benzie County and our, and the guidance that he has provided. Um, some of the negotiation strategy and really framing up the thoughts and stuff with Tim Malone and his project and the Robin Grant, and now we're at this task force with Merritt. Um, he's been very, very important and um he, he believes in the greater good and that's awesome.
And we are not asking to spend more than what was allocated. In fact, you probably, we'll probably end up spending less, it looks like.
Probably. Um, yeah. So all I'm asking for is to amend that motion to offer greater flexibility so that we can bring on, you know, those other subject matter experts at different stages in this larger project. Um, and it's essentially, you know, kind of a purchase order, service order route is how we would take it.
My question is, can we do this at a regular board of commissioners meeting?
This is a recommendation forward, so.
This is a recommendation for the full board.
Yeah.
Would it be premature for me to make the motion?
Yeah, I do.
I ask, do we have an idea of what these other consultants at this point in time?
Yes.
Just for the record.
So the names are like how much they're going to charge? What do you think? So if you look in Mitch's three pager, um, he specifically calls out Grow Benzie. Um, and then he also calls out a John Willow and John Willow is with the Community Broadband Action Network, which is a much larger organization at a much higher um government level who's working on this. And lo and behold, that person lives right in Interlaken, which is cool. Um, so we'll be able to have that person, you know, working with us on some of that digital equity piece and really growing that in Benzie County. Um, and then Grow Benzie, like I said, is offering a lot of support in this role. Jackie Borazan has been really helpful in the task force and really, you know, herding the cats and keeping that all in order for us. Um, so that's been very, very helpful. And then Merritt still at this point is offering all their services at no cost to us, which is great because they, these are PhD doctorate level folks who are offering us a lot of, a lot of insight and a lot of guidance in this digital equity piece. And we're only one of three groups that they're working with on that.
So on page 10 of the PDF.
Correct.
Mitch is getting $90 an hour, John's 90, Grow Benzie would be 50.
That's the only thing that occurs to me is we have um bumped into a hiccup with the road commission. And I don't know what's going to be negotiated at that level, but if there is a need, um, would this pot be something that could fulfill or fill in a gap or whatever's agreed to on that front?
It may be able to assist with some of that if it gets to that. I've spoke with Troy a few times on this and as, you know, Gary said, this is up to their board as to how they go. Um, but Troy and I have spoken at length about this and I'm feeling okay as to how things are going to land. I hope it lands in the right direction. I don't know if it's going to be everything that Cherry Capital is hoping for, but I think there's going to be some compromise at the minimum. Um, but this money could be utilized to assist or offset that if needed. Um, you know, because based on what we're projecting here, we're, we're probably not going to spend the whole 200 on these people. Um, so there could be some, yes.
We should know before we make the final decision on this anyway.
Well, we could make the recommendation to.
So the motion that I put in there is simply amend the July 26th motion to allow for flexibility in the allocation of funding.
And we wouldn't vote on that until the beginning of January.
Yeah, it'd be the January 9th or confirm.
With the road commission by then.
Yep.
Right? Or do you feel uncomfortable moving?
No, we should know this week.
Yeah.
So remembering this is just moving it to the Board of Commissioners.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, so I still make the motion that was stated.
Yes, it's in the packet. The Board of Commissioners amends their July 26, 2022 motion to allow for flexibility in the allocation of funding for the broadband expansion initiative and authorize it, authorizes administration to agree to partnerships with agencies and organizations to maximize its approach and obtaining additional grant funding for broadband expansion and the implementation of a digital equity compass.
That's exactly what I said.
I know you didn't.
So we have a motion and support. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is so moved. And with that decided, we get to our last public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Being none, I will close the last public comment and. And I'd like to say that's a wrap for 2023 and I just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
You too.
Oh, who's second? Evan?
No, I want to stick around. All right, I'll say.
All in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Christmas.
Everyone except him.